Okay, I'd like to call to order the 290th Annual Town Meeting. Welcome and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. My name is Bill Ty, the Town Moderator, and I'd like to just do a few introductions, and we're gonna start with the front table. I'm gonna start from right to left. We have Nadine Holver, Select Board; Renee Wood; Robert Kilmer; Rhonda Lombombard, our Town Administrator; and our Town Council, Jonathan Eichman; and we have a special finance committee person, Julie Hanum, who made it to the front. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our first responders, firemen, and police officers who are in attendance tonight. Can I please have them stand up, and let's give them a round of applause? Thank you. Tonight, our method of voting will be for registered voters receiving electronic device and a purple-colored piece of paper entering the meeting tonight. We will be using the electronic device as our main means of voting. The colored piece of paper will be used as a backup if needed. I'd like to have Martin Mitsoff go over the operation of the electronic devices right now.
Good evening, everybody. So, you've got a clicker in your hand if you're registered to vote and are able to do so. All of the articles that you're gonna see serially on the projection screen, all thirty-two, thirty-three articles, one means you approve it, two means you disapprove of it. If you choose to not vote, don't hit any buttons. The only two buttons that are functional on your little handsets are: one, approve; two, disapprove; nothing, then abstain. So, don't worry about that. I'm gonna be, we're gonna be keeping count down here. Any questions? We're gonna do one sample test first. Not like last year. Just letting you know.
Okay, our first sample question is: Do you like, do you approve of spring flowers?
Time! Time! Okay? We're good, Martin?
Good.
Okay. Please do not lose this colored piece of paper, 'cause as you just saw, something may happen, and we might have to go back there. Individuals wishing to address the meeting are encouraged to pre-read the warrant and plan ahead for when their article of interest is going to be presented. All speakers are to address the audience using the microphone set up in the main auditorium. Once at the microphone, please show the colored piece of paper you were given and state your name and address. You will only need to identify yourself the first time you address the meeting. All speakers are being asked to keep their remarks to five minutes or less. If you are still speaking at the four-and-a-half-minute mark, you will be given a reminder that you have thirty seconds left. The number of times that an individual can address the meeting on the same topic will be up to the discretion of the moderator. If an individual wants to use the motion to move or call the question, he or she shall follow the process previously mentioned on how to address the meeting. Shouts to move the question from the audience will not be recognized. A motion to move the question requires a second and a two-thirds vote, and is not debatable. Voters up front will be allowed to address the meeting as citizens. All speakers who address this meeting are asked to keep their remarks positive. Remarks of a personal nature directed at anyone in attendance will not be tolerated. Restrooms are located outside the main cafeteria. Do I have a motion to dispense with the town clerk reading the warrant? All in favor? Very good. Okay, we have thirty-three articles, I believe, on the warrant this year. Article number one. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money as listed below, and as many be amended and may be amended necessary to defray the expenses of the town for fiscal year 2024, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $4,210,412 for the purpose of funding those budgets listed in the warrant, which are necessary to defray the expenses of the town for fiscal year 2024.
Second?
I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. We have fifteen seconds to cast your vote, starting now. Time! Ninety-five percent approve. Motion passed. Article two. "To see if the town will fix, will vote to fix the compensation of the following elected officers of the town for fiscal year 2024 as required by Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight, and Chapter seventy-one, Section fifty-two of the General Laws." Moderator: $300. Selectman, Chairman, $3,000. Selectmen, two members, at $2,500 each. Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee, four members, at $500 each, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to fix the compensation of the following elected officers of the town for fiscal year 2024 as required by Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight, and Chapter seventy-one, Section fifty-two of the General Laws. Moderator: $300. Selectmen, Chairman, $3,000. Selectmen, two members, at $2,500 each. Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee, four members, at $500 each.
Second?
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Okay, who are you?
George Olean, Foley Road. If you're not gonna treat all elected officials as the same with a stipend for their service on the boards, why should any of them get anything? And one of the members of the board last year said that because they weren't giving the planning board anything, he wasn't gonna, they weren't gonna accept, or he wasn't gonna accept his stipend, but he did according to the town report.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
George, what I said was that before I would give the planning board a stipend, I would forego mine. That is exactly what I said. That is a little bit different. The problem is, we have several boards, and they all volunteer and do a lot of work, and where do you stop and where do you end the decision? I know you say because it was an elected position versus a appointed, you think that makes the difference. So far, it doesn't seem to have a lot of backing. If you wanna vote against this on that principle, you're more than welcome to.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Fifteen seconds. Time! Motion passed by majority. Article three. "To see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District operating and transportation budget for fiscal year 2024, and vote to raise and appropriate $7,713,666 to pay the town's assessed share of the budget, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District operating and transportation budget for fiscal year 2024, and to vote to raise and appropriate $7,713,666 for the town's assessed share of that budget.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Motion passed, majority. Article four. "To see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District roof and boiler debt for fiscal year 2024, and vote to raise and appropriate $176,409 to pay the town's assessed share of that debt, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District roof and boiler debt for the fiscal year 2024, and to vote to raise and appropriate $176,409 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget.
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Motion passed, majority. Article five. "To see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District capital budget for fiscal year 2024, and to vote to raise and appropriate $170,157 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget, or take any actions relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District capital budget for fiscal year 2024, and to vote to raise and appropriate $170,157 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Motion approved, majority. Article six. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $50,000 to pay for vocational education tuition in fiscal year 2024, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $50,000 from overlay surplus to pay for vocational education tuition in fiscal year 2024.
We got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Motion passed, majority. Article seven. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds $166,250 for the disposable and management of solid waste, and to authorize a board of selectmen to take any action to effectuate the purpose of the article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years for such solid waste disposal and management, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise from solid waste disposal enterprise prize fund reserves $166,250 for the disposal and management of solid waste, and to authorize the Select Board to take any action to effectuate the purpose of this article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years for such solid waste disposal and management.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Motion passed, majority. Article eight. "To see if the town will vote to accept funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Chapter ninety of the General Laws to pay for such costs as allowed by appropriate legislation in connection with the maintenance, repair, and construction of townways and bridges, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Chapter ninety of the General Laws to pay for such costs as allowed by appropriate legislation in connection with the maintenance, repair, and construction of townways and bridges.
We have a second. Any discussion? Now, you're not saving all the discussion for later, are you? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Motion passed, majority. Article nine. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the appointment of members of the board of selectmen to any office or position under its supervision at no additional compensation in accordance with the provisions of Chapter twenty-eight A, twenty-one, Section twenty-one A of the General Laws, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the appointment of members of the board of selectmen to any office or position under its supervision at no additional compensation in accordance with the provisions of Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty-one A of the General Laws.
We got a second. Any discussion?
David Rogers, Tariot, Forty-Five East Road. I believe that any position in the town government that needs appointment should not be filled by anyone who has appropriate oversight of that position, as such, the Select Board should not be filling any position in the town government that's not elected. If it's not possible to fill a position reasonably with someone who is, is, at current rates, then it suggests that we are attempting to underpay personnel running the town, and we should revisit the question of compensation.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. Time! Motion passed, majority. Article ten. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Health to employ any of its members as Title V and perk test witnesses for septic system inspections and sanitation inspections under its supervision in accordance with General Laws, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty-one A, for fiscal year 2024, and to set the salary for those positions at $60 per Title V inspections and $125 per perk test in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section four A, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Health to employ any of its members as Title V and perk test witnesses for septic system inspections and sanitation inspections under its supervision in accordance with General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty-one A, for the fiscal year 2024, and to set the salary for those positions at $60 per Title V inspection and $125 per perk tests in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section four A.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Motion passed, majority. Article eleven. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer-collector to sell, with the approval of the board of selectmen, any parcel or parcels of real estate which have been or may be required through the foreclosure of tax title, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the treasurer-collector to sell, with the approval of the Select Board, any parcel or parcels of real estate which have been or may be acquired through the foreclosure of tax title.
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Article passed, majority. Article twelve. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $77,000 to continue for, to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures under the provisions of Chapter forty, Section six of the General Laws, known as the Reserve Fund, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $77,000 from free cash to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures under the provisions of Chapter forty, Section six of the General Laws, known as the Reserve Fund.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Article passed, majority. Article thirteen. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $750 to emergency response fund, or take any other actions relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $750 from free cash for the emergency response fund.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Article passed, majority. Article fourteen. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $10,000 to compensate..." Okay, "to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $10,000 to compensate firefighters for training, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $10,000 from overlay surplus to compensate firefighters for training.
We got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Article passed, majority. Article fifteen. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $5,000 for financial services, including but not limited to audits, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $5,000 for financial services, as written in the warrant.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Article passed, majority. Article sixteen. "To see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Paragraph fifty-three E and a half, as most recently amended to establish fiscal year 2024 spending limits for the revolving funds as set forth below. Plumbing inspector, $25,000. Gas inspector, $15,000. Electrical inspector, $25,000. Fire safety inspector, $20,000. Board of Health, $25,000. Senior transportation, $15,000. Senior center programming, $10,000. And tax title fees, $10,000. Or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to establish FY twenty-four revolving fund spending limits, as written in the warrant.
We got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time! Article passed, majority. Article seventeen. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $250,000 to purchase and equip, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, and excavator for the highway department, or take any other action..." relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $250,000 from free cash for the purchase and equipping of an excavator as written in the warrant.
Do we have a second there? Second, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article passed, majority. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to transfer to sum of $50,000 from Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for recycling programs and repairs at the transfer station, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $50,000 from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for recycling programs slash repairs at the transfer station as written in the warrant.
We got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article passed, majority. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $40,000 for the town to hire an odor control expert to assess odor emanating from the marijuana establishments, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $40,000 from free cash to hire a marijuana odor control expert as written in the warrant.
We got a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, Rick McDowell, 78 Ashley Falls Road, Sheffield. I'm requesting the town's support and passage of Article 19 for an odor control specialist. Visitors to Sheffield are quickly welcomed by the intense marijuana odors on both ends of Route 7. Sheffield voters approve permitting marijuana establishments in Sheffield without any local regulations or bylaws in place, with high expectation that taxes and impact fees could be a huge financial gain to the town. Please note that it is not currently, the town is not currently collecting those impact fees. Several of these growers are not held to odor control standards or bylaws for such, as they are considered grandfathered by being permitted before bylaws were created. Unfortunately, if you live near one of these several sites, you have no recourse through the town about noxious and very unpleasant, the noxious and very unpleasant smell of the marijuana, the marijuana omits in its growing stages, be it from outdoor grow or from indoor grow, that has no filtration standards to meet. Again, these are considered grandfathered. From my residence of 22 years on Route 7A, the odors can become so intense you can't enjoy outdoor activities at times, or leave your windows open on summer nights, as it can make you nauseous. Other neblers and townspeople in my area concur. Those of us that have lived locally in these areas for evaporation long before marijuana came to Sheffield are bearing the real impact of these grandfathered operations. Realistically, we should be considered great-grandfathered and have some recourse or rights given our tenure. Constructively, I have had the opportunity to meet with the selectmen and several local growers and retailers to discuss the issue. Those considered grandfathered are objective and seem conscientious to the odor, but in my opinion, there is no incentive for them to do anything that would financially impact their businesses by attaining new regulations and installing indoor filtration to mitigate and ease these odors or odor control for outdoor grows. Approving this article will set aside funds for our odor specialists to complete a study and provide findings and recommendations that may or may not improve the situation, but it is a step in the right direction to deal with the, with an issue many people in town acknowledge and those just passing through our town readily comment on. Thank you.
Yes.
Dennis Gibbons, 3 Barnum Street. Dennis Gibbons, 3 Barnum Street. I don't disagree with what that gentleman just said.
Okay, just speak a little closer to the mic.
Sorry. I don't necessarily disagree with the gentleman preceding me. I do, however, well, I just want to pretext this a little bit. I'm the Senior Director of Cultivation at Berkshire Roots in Pittsfield, Massachusetts. When the city of Pittsfield came to our facility and told us that we had an odor issue, we were proactive and we took it upon ourselves to pay for that odor remediation. It didn't require us to do a study. In fact, we're all here for this warrant, or this issue, this article is on the warrant, because it is an issue. I don't, I'm not exactly sure what $40,000 the study will tell us more. I just believe that if that's an issue, then we should be dealing with it however we need to deal with it, or the proactive nature of these facilities should be taken upon themselves rather than the taxpayer. That's all.
Ilana Steinhauer, 94 Root Lane. Can we just have a point of clarification? I thought that the growers were responsible for the smell mitigation from all of these past meetings we've been having.
Some of the operations where there's complaints from the odors and the smell were grandfathered, so they do not have to follow the zoning bylaw, the marijuana zoning bylaw, because they were established before the bylaw was put into place.
We got you.
As far as the odor goes, as I understand it, it's horrible and certainly something that should be dealt with and should be taken care of. My concern about this particular article is what do we hope to achieve by having an expert spending $40,000 for someone to come out and say, hey, the air stinks? What could we, what could the town possibly do to effect change since the organizations are grandfathered before the zoning bylaw? Either they do it voluntarily, or they don't. The town doesn't have any means to coerce them or to insist by law. So how can this be a benefit to the people who are forced to endure the awful smell?
The Select Board is thinking that the answer to that question is that with the help of a professional odor specialist who deals with exactly this situation, that there will be some approaches, remedies, recommendations that can then be discussed with the grandfathered marijuana growers. I think this is to some extent a matter of fairness in that these fees, we have collected a fair amount of money from the community impact trees, even though the Select Board has now suspended these given the state of legislation and uncertainty. This money has been paid by the growers as a whole, and the community impact fees roll over every year to free cash. So my thinking, and maybe it's distorted, is that this is money that the marijuana manufacturers and growers have already paid into our town coffers. So I don't think this is a tax issue that we're asking someone to pay. Granted, that money could be used for something else. I also feel that it is very unfortunate that just by the luck of the draw of where you bought your home prior to the enactment of marijuana, you may or may not have been surprised. And this body, as I try to remind people, did not approve a marijuana moratorium, which would have likely prevented this situation, but instead voted it down at town meeting, and there were a number of manufacturer growers and other businesses that came in while the planning board diligently worked on putting marijuana bylaws to control such situations before town voters the next year, which were passed by a large measure. So I just ask you to think about if you were in one of those residents where you were across the street from someone who came in after you moved in, and you had symptoms that made living in your home very awkward, or you were disturbed by the smell of marijuana, what would you want this town to do?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to comment again.
Just raise that thing right up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. A little taller. You know, I think you'll have success with indoor cultivation in terms of odor remediation. I think it'll be very difficult to remediate outdoor odor. So I, I mean, with the assessment that you're looking to get for $40,000, I would just be cautious on expectations.
So I don't disagree that it would be nice to get somebody else to pay the freight on this, but the reality becomes that because they're grandfathered, there's nothing they can do other than public pressure to get them to pay. They don't want to have to reach into the coffers. Maybe the real thing is, is to get the impact fee collected, put it in a special fund, and if you have to give it back someday, so be it, but at least you've got the money in your pocket. Again, the reality becomes if you don't do anything here and approve this, then you're doing nothing because you can't get the grandfathered people to come to the table. Now, it passed in Sheffield by a 60 to 40 percent margin or so forth several years ago. The unfortunate thing is, is 60 percent of the people in Sheffield don't live on top of one of these facilities like I do and many other people when they came to town. So the reality is, is the town's taking in the money, the money's there from the impact fees. We should at least do the study. Unfortunately, they're grandfathered, they're in. There's no motivation for them to do anything other than stay the course of their business. So I would still recommend that we would approve this so that the funds are set aside for this and see what can be done. And maybe the Selectmen can, and they've tried, and the marijuana growers that the town has met would have come to the table, but again, without a study and without some due diligence, there's no gain other than we continue to just have this overbearing overwhelming smell. And if you live near it, you don't get a tax abatement or anything because your quality of life has just gone down significantly because you can't enjoy your home. What you get told is, huh, when you sell your house and you can't, and you, maybe you could prove to the town that you didn't get, you know, full market value because of what now lives next to you, to you, well, you know, maybe we could talk about it. There's nothing to talk about. It needs to be dealt with.
Yes.
I think the hope is also that if an odor specialist is hired, that that person is going to have a range of remedies. This is the hope. Maybe there's nothing that can be done. If that's the case, we've just spent $40,000 and we know the answer, up to $40,000, and we know the answer to that question. But I fervently believe that my goal is that there will be something that will come out, at least we're looking for it. We have very good relationships with our growers and our marijuana businesses, and I have the hope that if reasonable solutions are brought to their attention, that they may wish to consider the possibility of implementing them. And as has been said, we have no control over that, but many of our growers are actually, at least one, big one, is a town resident, and I would hope that if this votes tonight, that this would show that the town is in favor of taking care of this issue. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article passed, majority. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $5,000 for repairs to town-owned cemeteries, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $5,000 from free cash for cemetery repairs as written in the warrant.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article passed, majority. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to sum of $106,973 for the fourth-year payment of a fire truck lease purchase financing agreement, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $106,973 from free cash for the fourth-year payment of fire truck lease purchase financing agreement.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article passed, majority. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $100,000 to the fire truck stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $100,000 from free cash into the fire truck stabilization fund.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article passed, majority. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $150,000 to the general stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $150,000 from free cash into the general stabilization fund.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article passed, majority. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $150,000 for town building repairs, improvements, equipment and furnishings to include but not limited to the town hall, library, senior center, and police station, including any design and engineering costs and other costs and expenses incidental and related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $150,000 from free cash for building, for town building repairs as written in the warrant.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article passed, majority. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $25,000 to purchase information technologies, hardware, software, and services, including any incidental or related costs, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action to effect... to effectuate the purpose of this article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $25,000 from free cash for the purchase of technology, information, hardware, software, and services as written in the warrant.
Got a second.
Saraihoy, 60 Main Street. I wonder in this particular instance if there are specific programs and such that you have been looking at that amounted to the $25,000.
So each department, as I put in the explanation, each department has specialized software. There's road maintenance for the highway, of course, the tax program and the accounting programs. There's licensing programs. All of them require an annual support fee, and often the software has to be upgraded. I don't have all of the particular costs in front of me, but anyone who's interested in obtaining those can come and see me or give me a call, and I'd be happy to share what those costs are.
The reason I was asking is because I was wondering if any consideration has been given to improving the town's ability to hold hybrid public meetings and board meetings.
No, that's not included in this article.
So if we want to consider that, is that something we should be talking about next town meeting?
Sure, that's something that you should be discussing with the selectmen. But please keep in mind with that, that there also needs to be staffing costs included in that, for someone to be able to run that technology and attend all the meetings as well.
Yes, so I just think, I think we all realized through COVID how much more interaction we were able to have with the community when we were using Zoom. But it was difficult for people to hear and to feel completely involved, so next time.
Any other discussion? Time. Article pass, majority. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $600,000 for road and bridge repairs and improvements, including design, engineering, construction, and other costs and expenses incidental and related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $600,000 from free cash for repairs of roads and bridges as written in the warrant.
Got a second. We have discussion.
Jeff Collingwood, 703 Polikoff. I support the article, however, there's no explanation as to how the town intends to spend $600,000. Wondering if there's a project list for this and if there's going to be any specific public meetings for those, for their spending.
Most of these funds will be used to mill, reclaim, and pave many of the roads that are in very rough shape at this point. There's no one specific project that's going to eat up a large portion of this money. I think anyone who drives on a lot of the roads will see that there's many that are in desperate need of just repaving.
So there's no specific project?
We certainly have a list of priorities that we've gotten estimates on, but they are all for paving, reclaiming, milling, those types of projects.
Thank you.
The $600,000 to cover repairs and maintenance on the roads, it sounds like you're saying that it's all routine things like repaving and adjusting the ditches and shoulders and so on. On East Road, there is a bridge which has been closed for in excess of a decade, I think around 20 years, and is basically falling into the river. If the town is not going to replace or repair the bridge, it should be demolished, and funds should be appropriated to do that because it's at present a safety hazard. People walk across that bridge, and if something goes wrong, there are holes in the bridge where pavement has fallen through the river. At some point, more is going to fall in, and if someone is walking on it, that is not only a potential tragedy waiting to happen, but a giant lawsuit for the town waiting to happen because this has been sitting around for at least a decade, and nothing has been done to solve the problem or prevent problems or injuries.
We will take a look at that project and see what can be done to remove the bridge. I don't believe at this point there is any plans to install a new bridge at that location.
Any further discussion? Time. Article pass, majority. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $40,000 for guardrail replacements, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to, I move to transfer $40,000 from free cash for guardrail replacement as written in the warrant.
Second. Have a second. Any discussion? Time. Article pass, by majority. Article 28. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $20,000 for dry hydrant repairs, including design, engineer, construction, and any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $20,000 from free cash for dry hydrant replacements as written in the warrant.
Second. Have a second. Any discussion? Article pass, majority. Article 29. To see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Paragraph 5B, to create a new special purpose stabilization fund, to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which may be expended for all the, all of the purposes allowed by law, including those outlined in applicable opioid litigation settlement documents, a document prepared by the Substance Abuse Bureau and the Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services, entitled Abatement Strategies, and consistent with any state guidelines or regulations further clarifying allowable uses of opioid litigation settlement funds, and further, to adopt the last paragraph of paragraph 5B and dedicate to such funds without further appropriation, 100% of the, of the opioid litigation settlement funds received by the town, and further, to transfer from available funds a sum of money equal to that received or to be received by the town from opioid litigation settlements resulting from the town's participation in the national opioid multi-district litigation into said opioid settlement stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to create a new special purpose stabilization fund to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund, and further, to adopt the last paragraph of the General Law's Chapter 44, Section 5B, and dedicate to such fund without further appropriation, 100% of the opioid litigation funds settlement received by the town, and to transfer $2,944.02 from free cash into the opioid settlement stabilization fund as written in the warrant.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion?
Ilana Steinheuer. My, I'm for moving the money into this fund. My concern is that it states that the money cannot be spent without two-thirds a majority for the, in a town meeting, which means that this, these funds are going to sit for an entire year without being put into action. Is there any discussion about the use of these funds? By understanding that there was an ask for the funds to be given to the Rural Recovery Center in Great Barrington, I'm concerned based on the ARPA funding and how long it's taking to spend that these funds are going to have to sit for a full year when they could be put into action.
The board has discussed the request from the Rural Recovery Center, and they also are planning on the possibility of a special town meeting sometime in early summer. At that time, they will put on a warrant for voters to vote how to expend some or all of the money that is put into the account tonight if it passes.
Any further discussion? Now, Jonathan, we need a two-thirds vote on this.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, no further discussion, let's vote. Motion pass, more than two-thirds. Article 30. The Home Stretch. To see if the town will vote appropriate, will vote appropriate the sum of $1,600 from the PEG Access and Cable Related Special Revenue Fund to be expended under the direction of the Select Board for PEG Access Services, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate $1,600 to be expended under the direction of the Select Board for PEG Access Services as written in the warrant.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion? Time. Article pass, majority. Article 31. To see if the town will vote to transfer to sum of $13,701 from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund retained earnings to pay for FY 2021 recycling service costs, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $13,701 from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund retained earnings to pay for the FY 2021 recycling services costs.
Second. We have a second. Article passed. Article 32. Citizens' Petition.
So I would like to explain that there are three typos, I believe, in this warrant as it was published. So if there's anyone from the floor that would like to make a motion to correct two misspellings, and the figure of 50 in the warrant article should say 5G. So if anyone would like to do that now, it'd be the time to do so.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to amend Article 32 to read as follows. The citizens' position, for the reasons set forth above, notwithstanding any other provision of the Town of Sheffield general bylaws to the contrary, to see if the town will vote under the General Bylaws, Chapter 216, Wireless Regulations, to adopt a wireless telecommunications facility, parentheses, WTFs, application requirement for completeness. The WTF applications will be considered incomplete until the FCC completes the D.C. Circuit Court mandated environmental review of the entire 800,000 to 1 million WTF rollout to the conditions as stated in the NEPA Polity Act of 1969, including studies from scientists independent from industry who have fully investigated millimeter-wave 5G small cell technology safety, and that the FCC regulations have been updated to include measures that comply with results of this review, and that the Town of Sheffield should consider reasonable alternatives such as fiber optic.
I believe that the town should not approve this article. According to the article itself, the federal government in, under the auspices of the FCC, has jurisdiction over and has rules surrounding the approval of wireless telecommunications facilities, including the modern 5G technology. The FCC has established limits and protocols surrounding how much radio energy can be safely absorbed by the human body, and how much can be emitted from various wireless telecommunications facilities to ensure that compliance. This is, at a minimum, at best redundant, at worst creates additional hurdles for companies wishing to provide us with better mobile telecommunications services. Additionally, it specifies that we should consider all reasonable alternatives, including fiber optic. Fiber optic is not a reasonable or suitable alternative for any wireless communication since it's definitionally a wired communication method. If you're going to go wireless, you have to go wireless, and that either means older and slower technology, or we accept the modern technology at all the benefits that come with it.
Thank you. First of all, the FCC, just to comment, the FCC has never updated their wireless telecommunications safety limit since 1996. So we're looking at, we're flying blind here. Now, towns and countries worldwide have enacted regulations limiting the expansion of wireless frequencies beyond that of just making a phone call, which is effectively provided through 4G towers. 5G does not have anything to do with making a phone call. The 5G and higher generations, if we can see, being rolled out primarily for streaming can potentially compromise cybersecurity, our privacy, and our freedom of choice. We, as petitioners of this warrant, encourage you to take the first step in protecting our towns from this industry intrusion by voting yes for the warrant on 5G installations and halting applications until the FCC reviews their court order to determine if 5G is safe for pollinators, for the environment, and for people. If we issue permits for 5G transmitters prior to the FCC's safety determination from the court order, the town may be liable for lawsuits from residents claiming harm from these installations. In 1996, Congress enacted a system based on cooperative federalism whereby localities were granted the power to regulate the operations of all wireless telecommunications facility of any size or any G in order to ensure public safety in their communities. While we wait for the FCC response... While we wait for the FCC response, we encourage our town leaders and attorneys to conduct further research from sources independent from industry to assure residents that these frequencies pose little risk to our community. We ask you to take this first step in protecting our town residents by voting yes on the warrant, that the town reject applications for five G installations until the FCC responds to the mandated court order to review the scientific evidence submitted to them regarding harm and proves this technology is safe.
The National Environmental Policy Act.
Sir.
Yep.
Who are you?
Oh.
And where do you live?
I'm Gary Osborne, and I live in Sheffield.
What's your street?
Hewens.
Hewens.
The National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, of nineteen sixty-nine, was created to ensure federal agencies consider the environmental impacts of their actions and decisions. Federal agency, federal agencies are required to systematically assess the environmental impacts of their proposed actions and consider alternative ways of accomplishing their missions, which are less damaging to and protective of the environment. The FCC was mandated to comply with this act regarding five G small cell transmitters, and to date has not done so. Because of the FCC's non-compliance to confirm safety, if five G small cell installations are allowed in our community, our town may be forced to fight lawsuits from residents claiming harm from the millimeter wave frequencies. Therefore, shouldn't we wait until the FCC proves safety to engulf the town in five G installations? Thank you.
The FCC's rules surrounding radio exposure are frequency agnostic. They depend on the amount of energy absorbed by the body. The limits are not bounded to any particular G or any particular set of radio spectrum. The FCC has stated unequivocally in the law since the nineties that there are, there are limits to how much energy the body can absorb safely. The laws of physics have not changed in that time, and those numbers are not going to change because they're not dependent on a particular set of radio frequencies, which is really the only thing that has changed with five G technology. They have a higher set of radio frequencies and a lower power output. That's why they go a much smaller distance. They're no more dangerous than any other radio technology.
My name is Ingeborg Hecht, five one nine South Undermountain Road. I was asked to give my name. So, five G has nothing to do with telephone connectivity. It is simply a product by telecom to get impatient people to download streaming faster. But at what cost? Fiber optic and cable do a better job of that if connected by wires. Dead zones will rampant, will be rampant there is. We have woods and five G doesn't go through trees. Plus, if it rains, service is interrupted, much worse than four G cell tower transmissions, which are more reliable and have sufficiently given us users nearly as fast a download speed. It is worse, is it worth the risk of destroying our ecosystem, pollinators, and potentially our health just for a little faster download than you are in your car or walking on the street?
William Kelsey, Ashley Falls.
Well, wait a minute, you gotta turn the mic on. Okay, he's good.
William Kelsey, Ashley Falls, is representing the honeybee, the thing that we all cherish very much, may be interrupted with its daily chores of running around with this signal, which will interrupt their habitat. So, seeing as we are a nature, town, we need to consider that the poor little honeybee needs to be protected.
I am Joanne Robinson, three ninety-seven Clayton Road, Ashley Falls. As of January tenth, twenty twenty-three, four hundred and thirty scientists and medical doctors have signed the five G appeal. Urgently calling for the EU to halt the rollout of five G due to serious potential health effects from this new technology. The five G appeal documents five G's ability to substantially increase exposure to radio frequency, electromagnetic fields on top of the four, and two G, four, and three G and four G. Wifi for total communications already impales. Radiation for five G frequencies has been proven to be harmful to humans and environment. Why should Sheffield take the risk until this controversy is settled and the FCC proves
Hi, my name is Even Christine Gardner, and I live on Foley Road, and...
You have, did you get a clicker?
I have a clicker.
Okay.
Yeah. I can speak only to my own physical experience of exposure to dense five G, or, I can speak only to my experience in dense five G exposure areas and to the physical symptoms that I have experienced, which include headache and dehydration, and, um, one of the things I value most, living here, is the, um, the clarity of the, of the air, and I think that anything that we can do to protect, to protect this beautiful place, we should do it.
Yes, sir.
Rob Durwich, twenty-four Nancy Lane. I don't believe this petition is to stop five G from coming to Sheffield. I believe what we're trying to do is just to make sure that our children, our bees, and everybody in this room are protected from whatever it is that they're gonna be putting up on every other telephone pole all throughout town. There are different alternatives, and it would be wired, underground, fiber optic, and it's just a lot more expensive, and so a lot of people don't wanna pay the more money, but when it's your house or your, your health, I think it's worth it.
Chris Nye, one ninety Rhode Hill Road. I'm on the computer and on the internet pretty much every day, and I find that four G is perfectly sufficient. There's something in environmental science called the precautionary principle, which means if you aren't sure, don't do it. And what the government considered safe radiation when nuclear bombs were being tested in New Mexico turned out to be completely off the mark. So my recommendation would be to support this, support this measure.
I've been up a few times now, so just for anyone who didn't already know, I'm David Rogeterry at forty-five East Road. While certainly precaution in order of radiation, especially in the light of the government's incompetence at best in managing these things in the past, is reasonable and thoughtful. The fact is that the wireless technology has not changed since the nineties. All it's done is gotten higher frequencies. The science has not changed. The facts have not changed. The circumstances have not really changed, other than the technology improving, the frequencies get higher, the power output gets lower, it doesn't affect the body in any significantly different way. But putting all of that aside, if you vote to approve this article, you should understand that there is presently no fiber optic services in Sheffield. You cannot...
Okay. Ms. Let him talk.
I, from my own experience, I have attempted to contract for fiber optic services merely because I would like the added speed and then effects to go with it, putting aside the issue of five G technology. And I have been unable to find a servicer that will provide those services. Now, and it's all right, if, yeah, let me know after.
Charles Anderson, Shun Pike Road. Watching your problems with the marijuana people and the fact that things happen before you get bylaws, and it's the same problem you're gonna have here. Are we down the road gonna have five G everywhere, people getting sick, and no regulations and no control over it?
Dennis Sears, nine two eight Boardman Street. I did quite a bit of investigation on this, and basically, in my opinion, what has been shown is that there's been absolutely no health hazards based upon this particular thing that we're sitting here talking about tonight.
Judging from the audience reaction, I do expect that this will vote positive tonight. I will not be voting for it. I think you are putting the town in a very awkward position by voting for something that is legally non-applicable, in that Sheffield is not going to go against the FCC regulations. Sheffield is not going to be able to go against the encouragement and the fostering and any other positive word that says bring it on that the state of Massachusetts has put forward in its support of five G. I could do without any of it, okay? I don't even have a cellphone that I use, so I'm really back there. But the bottom line is that this town petition, I would like to ask our legal advisor here tonight, lawyer Jonathan Eichman from Copelman Page Law, which is the largest municipal legal firm in the state, for his comments on the legal applicability of this law if it does pass.
Good evening, Jonathan Eichman, KP Law. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good. I think, as a select person pointed out, I think this article if passed has some potential significant negative legal ramifications for the town. Telecom is regulated by the federal government. The federal government occupies the field at present. It is a federal statute that environmental concerns cannot be used to deny an application for wireless services. If you presume to deny an application on those grounds, and I would say that refusing to hear an application would be presumed to be a denial, because you're also required to act on those within a certain period of time, that can be appealed to federal court, and that would not stand as a basis for denial. Those appeals, if the board, if the town boards were to presume to deny applications, those appeals would have to be defended by the town. There is no precedent at this point anywhere that I'm aware of for successful lawsuits challenging the environmental standards that the FCC is presently abiding by. It's certainly open to debate whether those are correct standards at this point, but they are the standards, and those are the standards the court will apply. So there's definitely a significant legal risk here for the town. The other thing to point out here is that this, if this is passed as a general bylaw, which it appears to be, right now wireless communications in the town are regulated by zoning bylaw. The attorney general reviewing this is likely to point out that if you want to regulate, further regulate what you're doing with wireless communications, since you've done that by zoning bylaw, you have to continue to do that by zoning bylaw. You cannot do that by a general bylaw. So I think there's a likely, a substantial likelihood that the attorney general will not approve this as well. But again, I think the real risk to the town is not so much the attorney general, the attorney general will do what the attorney general does, but that if this passes and the town applies it, that I think it's going to be liable to lawsuit if regulations are denied because of this regulation.
Can I comment to that?
I'll also let you know, please, Nina, let me finish, that the select board has been working on a five G, small wireless bylaw to regulate the attachment of five G devices to the public right of way, which would be a general bylaw that is currently with KP Law for review, and we expect to bring it forward at the special town meeting later this year, probably late summer, that will address all of the zoning bylaws and general bylaws. So I would just ask you to think, I mean, I, I wish the FCC would update its radiation frequencies too, okay? But I just wanna ask you whether a hundred thousand dollars or more is best spent on this stand, or whether we should invest it in infrastructure and equipment and fire trucks, and whether we ought to let a town or a city like New York or Boston or Dallas or Houston or many of the other towns that have far more financial resources than we do to take up this matter. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Will you?
Indiana Anderson, Shun Pike Road. We conferred with the AGO when we wrote our citizen petition, and we did have the word moratorium in there, they advised us to take it out. We worked with them on this wording. So they are very familiar with the fact that we are putting this citizen's petition through, and that if it does pass, it will go to them, and they will recognize it because they worked with us on it already. So that's the first thing. Second thing is Andrew Campanelli, which is a very successful lawyer in Massachusetts, which has been working on this and has been advising us as well, and he also has advised many towns which have already approved their quote moratoriums on five G. And when you talk about five G, if you're going to write a bylaw, there are different kinds of five G, one like four G, which goes a long way, one medium range, and then the millimeter wave frequencies, which are the ones that are most harmful to the pollinators, to the trees, and to humans. So that's the ones that we're really trying to focus on. We don't mind if you're gonna say five G, but you can't lump them all together. So we know for sure, and we have attorney documentation that says that what we're proposing will fly with the AGO, and the fact that the towns do have the rights to regulate it as, as in the nineteen ninety-six Congress, when they based the cooperative federalism, it's right in the nineteen ninety-six Telecom Act, it says, right, says exactly, towns do have the rights to regulate any G in their town. So we've got all the documentation, we've got all the research. If anybody would really like to come and go through the eleven thousand pages of harm that were delivered to the FCC, which they're not addressing, we have the copies. We've taken with a wheelbarrow all around us. So we've done a lot of homework, and what we're just doing with Sheffield is say, look, if the FCC comes out down the road and says this stuff is really bad, who's gonna sue us? The people who, we've put it next to, who are getting sick, just like they're having the battles up in, in Lennox and in Pittsfield, and Great Barrington is voting on the five G warrant as well tonight. So we've got some solidarity, but we do have the right to do this. I've got all the documentation, and the attorneys who've been advising us, our Massachusetts attorneys, and the attorney general is on our side as well.
This is Ben Shavinsky, Killagh Road. Just as our attorney was speaking about, you know, regulations that had been set a long time ago, and... long time ago, and my question to this is, maybe the regulations need to be looked at as to their true efficacy in today. What's come about in the 90s or the 70s of last century is possibly not really applicable today and is something that we should really consider.
Hi, Mark Manoli, Boardman Street. Yeah, the issue, I mean, Pittsfield Board of Health votes to send cease and desist order to Verizon for cell tower. There's health issues occurring up there. People are moving away. I mean, I don't know that it's going to the Supreme Court. Yeah, I mean, let's just get past this. Get a little more information is what these people are asking for. You know, there's an odor issue. The issues that are present with these towers is a lot more severe than odor.
Yes, ma'am. It's on.
My name is Jane Smith, 465 Silver Street, and I'd like to call the vote on the amendment to Article 32.
We have to do a two-thirds vote? Got to show it by cards? Okay. Two-thirds. So we're going to do it the old-fashioned way? So just to be clear, we're taking a vote on now whether to end discussion. Okay? So all in favor, ending discussion? All up? Okay, opposed? Okay. We're ending discussion, minus one. Okay. Pass. Okay, so now we'll go back to our new way and we're going to vote on yes or no. Am I saying that right? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I think that was, what was called an amendment was actually the motion on this article. So I think we're prepared now to move to a vote on the article itself as moved.
Right.
Which changed a couple of terms, but that was the motion. This is the motion on the article.
Okay. So this is the vote on the motion of the article? Let me get my clock ready here. I tell you, we started slow, but we finished strong. Okay, let's vote. Time. Amendment passes. Okay, our final article tonight. Article 33. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $600 each quarter of a calendar year hence forward for the Sheffield American Legion Post 340 in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Part 1, Title VII, Chapter 40, Section 9, until such time of updating by the veterans of Sheffield American Legion Post 340 or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Moderator? Well, hold on. We don't, I don't have a... A second. I've got a second. Okay. Any discussion? Am I doing something wrong here?
Do we have a motion from the floor yet? You read the article. Has anybody moved the article?
Nobody has moved the article. Is that what you're going to do, George?
Yeah, I'll suck it up.
No, you have...
Is the motion made?
We need to move the article. Somebody from the floor.
That's you.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, but I thought you mentioned the word moved it. So therefore I didn't read it, but this is Bruce Filbrick from Cobble Lane, and I would like to propose a motion, which is Article 33, a citizen's petition, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $600 each quarter of a calendar year hence forward for the Sheffield American Legion Post 340 in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Part 1, Title VII, Chapter 40, Section 9, until such time of updating by the veterans of the Sheffield American Legion Post 340 or take any other action relative thereto.
I need a second? Second. All right. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to know from Town Council whether this would be binding on the, on the select board.
John Eichmann, Town Council, again. It's an appropriation article, so the money would be appropriated for this purpose. It's not binding on the select board to spend it.
In that case, I would like to modify that, amend the motion to see if the town will vote to appropriate $600 each quarter of the calendar year henceforth for the Sheffield American Legion Post until such time as the, time of updating by the veterans of the Sheffield American Legion Post eliminated the reference to the article. Would that be binding?
No, like any appropriation article, when you appropriate money to the executive authority here, it's still within their discretion to spend it. You can't force them to spend the money. So you're appropriating, you're making the money available, but it still lies within whoever you give that money to. They have the discretion to spend it.
So all this, all these, all this other money that we've appropriated for them to spend is still up to them, huh?
Correct.
That's a bunch of crap.
Any, any further discussion? All right. Don't know where that's coming from.
Well, I haven't just moved here. William Kelsey, a veteran, and I support that the town needs to appropriate money to take care of this public building because the American Legion has allowed this building to be used by the town. I moved here and I've been to meetings up there and they're struggling. And if the hearts of these people in this Congress, this town here, can't help them in a time of need when they've helped this town for generations, I think it is pretty small that you can't find, council, somebody can find appropriate money that we're asking, we're not asking for the sky here, we're not asking for 150,000, we're asking for just a little amount to take care of our needs. Thank you, and I hope you will help us out.
May I make a motion to amend this article at this time?
Okay.
I move that we change the last part of it that says until such time as updating by the veterans of the Sheffield American Legion Post 340 to say until such time as the town votes to change the amount of money.
So to do this properly, we have to... We need a second for that. Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? The amendment, we have to do the old way, correct, Martin? Oh, we have discussion coming. Okay.
Jack McKelvey, 108 Salisbury Road. I don't know that I've ever, in a meeting like this, voted something henceforth as though it were forever. I have no problem with providing money for the work that is done through the veterans and through this request. I would, I would amend the motion, which I guess would be an additional amendment, given the amendment just made, to say that $2,400 would be made available as requested and paid through the town office. And I would thereby remove the wording "henceforward."
Well, that's starting slow tonight.
Point of order? I believe we have to vote on the, this amendment.
That's correct.
Before we can take another amendment.
That's correct.
To comment on the gentleman's proposed amendment, I would support the amendment. I think the American Legion Post does deserve our support. I simply think that the law, the bylaw needs to state unequivocally that the town is in charge of how and when the money is appropriated. And since it says that it's until the veterans of Sheffield American Legion Post decide, that means we are essentially granting them the authority to decide when it should change without our input. And I think that's an important consideration.
Okay. So before we go to the second, okay, let's, before any more discussion, okay, let's, no more amendments, just discussion on, on the first one, okay?
Rob Durwich, 24 Nancy Lane, again. I don't know about what all these amendments are for. I'm kind of confused by them all. I know a little bit of what they're doing, but for the past 20 years, our post has been getting $500 a year. During COVID, it shut our, our building down. When we let somebody rent our building, that brings in money to our legion so we could pay our bills. We couldn't pay our bills. The town received $900,000 from the federal government for COVID relief. We asked for money for COVID relief to help us out. Town said no. For the last 20 years, not henceforth, 20 years, we've been getting $500. In that time, I've been voting on budgets going up and up and up and up to the tune of millions and millions of dollars. 20 years, millions and millions of dollars went up. Our post still got 500 bucks. So we're asking for $600 a quarter until the next time, 20 years from now, we have to ask again to get more money. So whatever that means, whether it's henceforth or not, that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no discuss... Yes?
This is going to be a shared conversation with you between Rhonda and myself. I want to first ask her just to correct the record, to say what the town does pay for and for the American Legion. And then I would like to make a comment on the misinformation of the denial of a request from the American Legion. So first, Rhonda.
So you were correct. We do make a donation of $500 annually. We also pay the electric, the heat, the water and maintenance, outside, outdoor maintenance for that building. So I understand your request, but I want everyone to understand that it is more than just the $500.
So the second part of this is that when we got the ARPA funds, we asked for public input and the American Legion did come forward and I think it was 125,000 or 150,000 dollars they requested. There were a lot of other organizations, including Dewey Hall, Affordable Housing, et cetera, et cetera, that came forward. The select board made no decision, made no denial to any of those people who spoke at those two public information sessions, including the American Legion. We have denied no funds. Now, we also haven't granted any funds and we have a, Dewey Hall coming forward to ask for funds tomorrow. And we have said that we have looked into the Great Barrington process for allocating some of those ARPA funds to nonprofits. We found their process to be extremely complicated and we have told people who have come forward that we are looking on this after town meeting because a lot of effort and energy goes into this. So I just want to correct the record. In fact, we've also set around aside $40,000 that may be up, that may be not up, but I do want to correct the record. We have not said no to the American Legion on ARPA funds.
I have a point of order.
Oh, hold on, hold on a minute. George is up here first.
Yes. In reference to the payment of electric bill, the mowing the lawn, the gas bill for the American Legion, okay, that was all an agreement for the senior, for putting, allowing the senior center on property that we, we owned. We gave them the property for that and that was part of the agreement. The other part was the fact that they use our front lawn, which we can't, no longer use, for a septic system. That, to me, is what that money was for. It has nothing to do with the maintenance of the legion. They mow the lawn, yes. They pay the electric bill, yes. They pay the gas bill, yes. But they've also screwed up our lawn with a mound that wasn't supposed to be any higher than the floor of the legion and it's at least three feet up the windows in the front. And we get water backed into the hall because the, the way the pipe was put in from the senior center to that field, it was raised up a little bit. I don't care if it was put in by an engineer. The engineers put in the new bridge over the Green River too, and they had to make corrections to the road because they engineered it wrong. So, and we did ask for $30,000 of the COVID relief money, which at the time we were told that it was for those that cannot raise money, raise funds because of COVID. And we were turned down twice.
I still have a point of order.
Yes.
I, I think this discussion has strayed beyond the scope of the amendment I proposed. So I would like to call the question on the amendment only to, to state, to change until such time of updating by the veterans Sheffield American Legion Post 340 to until such time as the voters approve a change so that we can continue with discussion on the actual main motion.
All right. So we need to vote on stopping discussion. We had a motion to...
Sorry, a point of order. We have had four amendments proposed from the floor, two of which have been seconded, two of which have been not seconded. We have to, I believe we have to dispense with the first proposed amendment, of which there was a second, decide on that.
That's what we're going to do.
Go to the next amendment, what George, I think, proposed. We've got four amendments on the floor.
You're telling me.
Right. So which one are we voting on and what is the last one we're voting?
Well, we're going to vote right now on stopping discussion on the first amendment.
So second, on that first amendment, I didn't hear about.
The first amendment, there was a second.
Yes. Yeah.
Could someone tell us what we're voting on?
Could someone tell us what we're voting on? What is that amendment?
What, now listen, there's too much discussion going on, I can't hear anything. You stay right there, sir.
I just wanted to clarify this...
You're, you're wearing a path in the rug there. Just wait, wait a minute, right there. So, what we just had here, we got a motion and a second to call, stop the discussion on the amendment that this fella just made right there. So we want to need a vote on that with our colored pieces of paper. All in favor, to stop a discussion? Opposed? All right, now, what I want you to do is read what you want that amendment to say again, so we all know what we're voting on.
No, I have not written it down. Can I do that after? Okay. Okay, so I will just read the whole article as I propose we amend it, so that it's clear for everyone.
Sounds good.
Article 33, citizen's petition, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $600 each quarter of the calendar year henceforth for the Sheffield American Legion Post 340, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Part 1, Title 7, Chapter 40, Section 9, until such time as the voters change the compensation.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. So now it's time to vote. This is, we have to do this the old-fashioned way because this is amended, correct, Martin?
I might have missed that.
Okay. All right, so we'll do it, we'll do, we'll do it the old-fashioned way until Martin wants to answer. All right, so we're going to do it the old-fashioned way. All in favor of that amendment as written? Or as said?
As written.
All right, so now, that amendment has been passed. Now we have another amendment.
My amendment is to approve $2,400 for this year and remove "henceforth" from the original.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, any discussion on that?
Mr. Moderator, how does that now read in the last line? Does Mr. McKelvey's motion, which takes and changes the amount to 2,400 each year or each calendar year, and takes out the "henceforth," but what happens to the second, the last line? He is motioning on the earlier motion, so it would read as the voters change the, until such time as the voters change the compensation. I'm just not sure what we're voting on.
Sir, you're going to have to clarify that?
I would assume that everything else that the gentleman proposed remain as is, except that we are authorizing $2,400 for the year, period, and thereby we remove the "henceforth", hoping and assuming that this will be taken up more seriously by the Town Council in preparation for next year. Is that, is that helpful?
That's not what the First Amendment said. Yes.
Help, help me then.
Yeah, Town Council can address this. Please, Town Council, address.
Yes, please, if it's, if I hear your amendment right, it sounds like you want to appropriate $2,400 this year for those purposes, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we can certainly simplify this. If you would accept a friendly change to your amendment, I think we could do this much simpler, and the amendment would simply be to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $2,400 for the Sheffield American Legion Post 340, period. That would be it.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so we have a second for that? All right. Any discussion on that? No, we're talking about the second one now.
Yes.
Okay.
I would just like to add that the appropriation of $2,400 per year is redundant. $600 each quarter is $2,400 a year.
It's a one-time appropriation.
Right. Okay, no more discussion on the Second Amendment? We all, anybody need clarification on that Second Amendment? Just to make sure. $2,400 a year?
Mr. Moderator, I can read it one more time if that would assist.
Read it one more time.
Yes. So the, the motion to amend would now make the article read as follows, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $2,400 for the Sheffield American Legion Post 340, period.
That's the motion, that's the seconded, no more discussion? Okay, we're going to, old-fashioned way, all in favor? Raise up those cards, up high, for five minutes, hold those arms up there. Okay, bring them down. All opposed? Okay, the amendment passed. Now, I'm almost afraid to say, what's next?
Vote on the article.
We got to go to the article?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as amended.
So now, we're going to vote on the article.
As amended.
As amended. So now we're going to do it the electronic way. Okay, let me get my clock ready. Okay, vote. All right, let's go to the old-fashioned way.
No, I have one question. Is that just for one year, period?
Yes, one year.
Yep. That's why we read it a couple times. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion passed. Okay, do I have a motion to...
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. All, all right, thank you.